Good evening and welcome to the Port Clinton City Council Regular Meeting of July, or excuse me, January 23rd, 2018. Please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, the Lord's Prayer, and taking a moment of silence for our Military Power of First Person address.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is named one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am your Father, your Son, and your Holy Father, and your holy Son. I am your King, and your Father, and your Son, and your Father, and your Son. He blessed us with grace, and with his great presence, and with his great wisdom, and with his great faith, and with his great charity, and with his great courage, and with his great wisdom, and with his great courage, and with his great faith, and with his great courage, and with his great wisdom, and with his great courage, and with his great faith, and with his great courage, and with his great wisdom, and with his great courage, and with his great faith, and with his great courage, will the clerk please call the roll?
Dave Velo?
Present.
Joel Freeman?
Present.
Beth Gilman?
Present.
Roseanne Hickman?
Here.
Brian Hill?
Here.
Margaret Phillips?
Present.
Lisa Sardi?
Present.
Council, you received the December 26th, 2017 Regular Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes that are written? Mrs. Sardi?
Second.
Ms. Phillips? The second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
The meeting minutes stand approved as they are written. The Chair notes that certification has been received regarding the compliance with the rules and notification of this meeting. Now move to the guest presentation portion of our evening. And tonight, we have Mr. Mark Messa, Director of the Ottawa Regional Planning Commission.
Make a certain place, Sean. From seven, just like. Go water, we got the person.
I know it's kind of short, I got ahold of Lisa because I didn't have all the contacts late last week. I'm actually here representing the Land Reutilization Corporation, the Ottawa County Land Bank. My office administers it, and we are finally in the home stretch of the 131 Madison property. We're getting to the point now where we're hoping to transfer the property over to the city, as we had, I think the land bank has discussed in the past. And I think I'm mainly just here so everybody kind of knows what's happening with it, what's to be expected next in order for this thing to move forward. Essentially, we're to the point now where everything's demolished. Grass seed was put in, late October, early November, and then we worked through the process of getting legal descriptions put together. BEC Associates donated their time, so there's three new legals put together, and they produced the survey drawing that's in front of you. Essentially, what it boils down to is the shared wall, which would be, if you're looking at the paper, would be on the left side, which was, or on the, towards the top of the page, was the north wall for Lenny Parton's building. That was a shared wall, so the property line was actually in the middle of that wall. When we tore the building down, we had some conversations with Lenny as to who was going to maintain the wall, who was going to own it. So you'll notice there's actually three parcels on there. He's getting, what I believe is about five inches, so that entire wall then will be his. So when we transfer the final remainder piece to the city, he owns the wall, he'll maintain the wall, so the city doesn't have to worry about that. The other portion, the other small portion on the right side of the page, which would be the east side, is where Melinda Cooley's stairs are. In the current legal description that the land bank owns title to over that entire property, there's an ingress egress easement that remained in perpetuity for that property. She's actually here tonight, so basically, so that's the only way up to the second story of that building. So there was no getting rid of that easement. The stairs took up the entire easement. So again, the land bank was just kind of thinking in order to make it simpler for the city, to not have to worry about maintaining anything, you know, who owns it, who maintains it, it's an easement. We were just going to transfer, I believe, it's just over seven feet, which, when BEC went out, they located the furthest point on the stairs, so it's essentially just the stairs that's then being transferred to her. And then I requested that instead of having the legal description be this piece, less than accepting these two other pieces, I wanted them to actually write a remainder piece as well, which they did. So then you'll actually have a clean legal description that describes exactly what's going over to the city. So that's all been done, which is what I thought was going to be the hard part, but as I'm dealing with this NIP program more and more, it seems it's a lot of red tape. Erie County's been doing this for several years. Scott Shell over there has been a great resource for me. He said, in transferring properties, they haven't given it to any to the city of Sandusky yet, but they have given it to nonprofits, such as Habitat, which they can do, or to a parks organization. And he said typically it's taken between 60 and 90 days for them to get everything to the county auditor or recorder's office to release the liens. Because the way the program worked is obviously the demo cost and the asbestos and everything was a little over $75,000, and then we had a little over $60,000 in the renovations of the two existing walls that we fixed. So the, all the demo work was paid for through the grant, but essentially, right now, there is a three-year lien on the property for $75,000. And every year that we maintain the property, they'll come and visit, the state folks, once in the spring, once in the fall, to verify that we're maintaining the green space, and each year a third of that falls off. One way to get out from underneath that early, to get an early lien release, would be to give it to a nonprofit or to a municipality. In this case, the city's expressed interest. The land bank would like to get, we really don't want to continue to mow and maintain land, and it's right downtown, it's a great location. So with that in mind, essentially, the next steps at this point, there's several papers I have to fill out online on their websites called the LIDA website, and one of the things they requested was a letter from the city on letterhead, which I kind of did a quick and dirty one paragraph, just as an example. You're welcome to use it, you can have Mr. Wilber draft something. Basically, they just wanted a letter from the city on city letterhead stating that they were in fact looking to acquire the property from the land bank, and that what your intentions are, and their stipulations are that it must, whatever your intentions are, must be completed within 12 months. The easiest thing is just to say that it's going to remain a green space. The grass seed is planted, so long as weather cooperates and the grass comes up this spring. Basically, by April, you'll have your green space completed. Put a park bench out there, whatever. I'll go take pictures and then submit it to them and show them that it is in fact a green space, and that was completed within 12, the first 12 months. Once they release their liens and I transfer, and the land bank transfers it to the city, at that point, the city can do with it as it pleases. You can sell it, you can lease it, you could put a building on it. It's mainly just getting that lien released, which would happen, you know, basically, hopefully within the next 60 to 90 days. We would just need that letter from you, I'd fill out some paperwork, and then, like I said, once it is greened, we'll take pictures and send it in. Anybody have any questions? Since it's early on, there's not a whole lot that needs to be done from you guys, but I guess as long as you're willing, you know, still take the property, that's, I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on what's expected and what has to get done. But, fingers crossed, this is all done by late March, early April, and really, it's just going to depend on how long it takes them to release the liens and actually transfer it.
Lisa Sardi, for the letter you need from the city, what's your timeframe like that from the city?
Sooner the better, just because that 60 to 90 day time clock doesn't start ticking until I submit everything to them. Until they get everything that I submit to them, that's when they start the process of releasing the lien, and one of the things that I need is that letter. So we're not, that 90 day window doesn't start ticking down until I get that submitted. And the land bank, like I said, we tried to get everything else done ahead of time, so then once we get that, we can move forward. And honestly, now that we got the legal descriptions and everything, it's to the point where I have to fill out about two forms on their website and submit that letter of intent to accept the property, turn it into a green space. And like I said, once the lien, the green space part, you know, it definitely doesn't have to remain that. They just like to see that to get it released, and again, with the grass seed planted, that's kind of the easiest thing. If you wanted to say, well, it's going to be a community shower house or something else, well, then you're clamped, and that first year, you have to have that project completed. Whereas if you call it a green space, the grass is planted, six, 12, 18 months down the road, if you'd like to do something else, great, but that way, we can get it released and it's at essentially no cost to the city. That's why that was my suggestion in the letter.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Messa?
Sure.
Two things. One, just as an aside, thanks for your work on that 100 block with walnut. That was horrible and looks great. Well, thanks, team and the land bank. My understanding is that council approved the resolution donating about 20 grands to the land bank, right?
Correct. To help pay for the renovation.
Received that?
Yes. To help pay for the renovation costs of those two remaining walls.
Right. I guess nobody has, Mr. Wilber or anyone else who wants to weigh in, what's the, what are your early thoughts in any potential hangups moving forward with the letter, I guess, been my first question.
Does any ordinance council authorize going ahead?
Madam President, I move ahead.
Ms. Sardi, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. As I say, I think the only other thing we gave to your point, I think we took six down, seven down in the city proper. I have four going right now on the west end of the county, and then there's 218 East Fourth, 215 Hayes, and 315 Hoover, I believe, in Erie Gardens are going to be the next three, and those should be happening mid-late March, is when we're going to get rolling on the contracts for that. Basically, I got to get the ball rolling on these next four, and then we're going to be going on three more and four, so.
Cool.
All right? That's all.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. You give an easement to the adjacent properties by foot, correct?
In this proposal?
Yes.
She currently has an ingress egress easement. We're doing away with that and just going to transfer the land.
Okay. Is there any stormwater or drain easements from those properties on that property?
Not that I'm aware of, nope. No.
Just if you could, in the land bank, thank you for all their hard work. Thank you for all that you've done.
Definitely. I got to pick my girls from Grandma's, so. If you guys have any questions, feel free, just contact our office, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now move to public comments.
Melinda Cooley, 617, oral ask.
Well, Mark was definitely a good segue, so thanks for having me. I am here tonight to obviously express interest in the 131 Madison property, doing to the adjacent landowner, being the business owner. I just had a couple of questions. Mark answered some of them for me. My first question is, once the lien is lifted, what is the city's outlook to do with that land? Has anything been discussed as of yet? What would like to be seen? And then, my next question is, is the city interested in selling it, and what that process looks like?
Sorry? No answer to that at this point.
Okay. Once decisions are made, would it be okay if I was included in knowing about that, or how would I find out about those? About those decisions?
I'm sorry, I can't hear anything.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Wilber, to dispose of a property like that, would we? It's.
Yeah, I would, 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 I would,
Safety and Service to enter into an LPA federal local let project agreement with Ohio Department of Transportation ODOT for the reconstruction of Jefferson Street and declare it a priority.
Does council wish to take any action on ordinance four-eighteen?
Madam President?
Mrs. Sardi.
I move that we amend ordinance number four-eighteen, section one, THG, directed.
A motion to amend ordinance four-eighteen?
Second.
Second, Mr. Beal. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dave Bealow?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Does council wish, or, excuse me, ordinance four-eighteen has been amended. Does council wish to take any further action on ordinance four-eighteen as amended?
Madam President?
Mrs. Sardi.
I move that we waive the three required readings on four-eighteen, due to time sensitive and during discussion, I will have to find and discuss.
Second.
Mr. Beal, thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dave Bealow?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Does council wish to take any further action on ordinance four-eighteen as amended?
Madam President?
Mrs. Sardi.
I move to retain the emergency clause as to ordinance number four-eighteen.
Mr. Friedman, thank you for the second. Will the clerk please call, or, excuse me, further discussion? Mr. Martin, would you like to say something important?
Just in, with regard to background, the LPA agreement between the city of Port Clinton and Ohio Department of Transportation, this National Transportation Act makes these funds available for use by local public agencies, which is the term, the LPA agreement. This project currently, ODOT will provide ninety-five percent of eligible costs up to a maximum of $2,582, two hundred, excuse me, $2,582,662 in federal funds, leaving in five percent of the cost of the construction project to be met with local funds. The time constraint that we find ourselves under is that because this project has moved forward, we are in the process of approving the qualifications for design firms, and we will need to move forward on that very soon, prior to February, because of scheduling of project dates that we have from ODOT that are already in their system.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Dave Bealow?
Yes.
Does council wish to take any further action on ordinance four-eighteen as amended?
Madam President, I move we adopt ordinance number four-eighteen.
A motion to adopt four-eighteen as amended?
As amended.
Second from Mr. Friedman, will the clerk please call the roll? Oops. Yeah, sorry. Yes.
We did discuss this today at our special infrastructure meeting, and it was passed, voted, passed three zero to ask council to adopt this.
Thank you, Mrs. Sardi. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dave Bealow?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Ordinance four-eighteen as amended has been adopted. We'll now move to business for the court.
Thank you, Madam President. I also would like to thank the police, fire, and the street department, Chief Hickman, Ms. Martin. Also, I understand that county helped out loaning equipment to work on the lake shore of all the ice pack that everybody's been coming and looking at. So, good planning. You know, I know some people were upset for an emergency on the street, but it was a good plan. Streets were planned on quickly, and with great teamwork. And I just like to say thank you to all of you for doing that. The next infrastructure meeting will be February 6th at 6:30. The next park and rec will be February 13th at 6:30. And I'd also like to welcome Mrs. Friedman, a new zoning inspector, and thank her, thank Mr. Johnson, Mr. Beal, and everyone else that worked on giving us the CRA coin for the hotel. And I'd like to thank you for choosing Port Clinton, which we all think is a great place and having the confidence in us to build a hotel here. So, I think it's a great place. And that would be all.
Thank you, Mrs. Sardi. Mr. Friedman?
Mrs. Sardi said most of what I was going to say, so I'm just going to say the exact same thing. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman.